When you are Cable. Alright, thank you Cable. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. It is February 26th, 2020. We are here for the Soil Conservation Commission Public Hearing at 6:00 PM. And at this time, I call the meeting to order. This is being broadcast live on Channel 9. It is being audio and video recorded and will also be placed on YouTube. And at this time, I ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, we need to reorganize the board. We have not met in quite some time. So at this time, I will entertain nominations for Chairperson.
I'm gonna nominate myself for Chair.
I was gonna step down when I'm at the chair. I'll second that.
Okay. I'm gonna nominate myself for Chair. Do we have a second?
I don't think I can second again, can I?
You can, because then we have to vote.
I'll second that also.
Okay. All those in favor of electing Selectman Goulart as Chair of the Soil Conservation Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Abstentions?
I'll nay.
Okay. What was the vote on that?
I have just you said nay.
I said nay also.
Ken said nay. And then who said aye?
I did, everyone else.
I think, yeah, everybody said aye.
Mr. Mello as well? Did you say aye? Did you say aye?
Did I say aye?
Aye for Selectman Goulart as Chairperson?
Did you vote? This is asking if you voted.
When?
Just now.
Just a minute ago. No. We just, we're organizing the committee. So he called the vote and he asked for the, uh, those in favor of me being Chairman. That was the vote he called.
Okay. She has it, correct? Okay. Selectman Goulart?
Thank you. This is a hearing that has been posted and scheduled for 6:00 PM regarding DeRosa landscaping at 2040 County Street. And the first item is alleged violations of soil mining removal regulations. Mr. Agia, do you wish to speak first?
So pursuant to the permit, and I know we haven't had any dialogue with Mr. DeRosa, at least I have. He was supposed to keep soil logs of anything that was processed or left the property. Do you have those to present?
Anything that left the property derived from that.
Right.
Nothing's left of the property derived from that. So I have a log of 1,750 cubic yards that we agreed on that is typically was paid to, but as of right now, nothing from 2040 County Street of Dyton soil as well.
Okay.
And there was a fee that was paid, the tipping fee was paid this.
Based on the 1,750, which is what we agreed upon.
Correct.
So your statement is nothing's left of the site. That would have had to been logged in the soil log?
Nothing from Dyton soil.
Okay, so we don't have a soil log?
No, I have this here that's a 1,750 cubic yards that we agreed on July of 2018, I believe.
Okay. Would you like to submit that to the board?
Sure.
But you haven't removed anything since, which is why you weren't keeping. There was nothing else in the log, is what you're saying?
Nothing had been removed from Dyton soil. Of Dyton soil.
The other thing was that really, Mr. Agia, you were supposed to check on a regular basis to check the log. Have you been doing that?
I have. I have. And his actions have been, as far as I know, on the weekends, and I'm not here on the weekends, so.
I have a general, just a general question sort of related to that. So the timing appears to be that it looks like the police were involved in the matter before the logs have ever been checked. That's correct?
Correct, right.
How is that even possible? How did we get authorities involved when we don't even know there's a problem and the logs were never checked? I guess that's my concern.
So I didn't get the authorities involved. I went by a few times over the past 12 months. I think you can agree, you haven't had full operations there. It's been fairly quiet over there. I didn't even know if he was still occupying the property, quite frankly. It wasn't until recently that you started having soil processing going on.
I'm confused by the question. As opposed to me being there or you checking the logs? Is me being there?
You being there, you being there in particular. You haven't been there.
I mean, I've been there, I've been there.
Yeah, I know, but not at the same time that I've gone by.
Okay. Soil processing, what does that mean? Do you mean soil mining?
Believe, I don't know the exact.
One moment. Screening loom that he has purchased from elsewhere does not require a special permit and isn't a violation of the regulation. So I'm confused. Is the allegation that he was mining soil on his property?
Well, some of the soil that is being processed was derived from the property. That's why the permit was issued to begin with. We verified that 1,750 cubic feet is the number that we agreed upon. That was derived from the site. So some of the soil that's there is from the property.
Which he paid the tipping fee on.
Correct.
So he's more than entitled to do what he wants with it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm not denying that.
So what is the allegation?
I didn't make any allegations.
Okay, but there are allegations in the packet. So I'm trying to get down to the meat and the bones of what is the problem.
Excuse me. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Agia?
No, no.
Okay. Mr. Farah, do you have anything?
All I have is, I'm hearing complaints about the operation on Saturdays and Sundays. That's a violation of ours, you know, procedures.
Okay.
Charlie, excuse me, excuse me, just a minute. I'll recognize you in a minute. Do you have anything, Charlie, relative to his soil mining operations?
Well, I'm visiting the site they're using at the back of the property. And it's been an open area for all time, but there is activity in the 50-foot buffer zone. It's pretty well filled with debris, you know, stone, sticks, whatever you put, gone from the, uh, open, the soil. And you had to file with the commission. Actually, it's a violation, but that site has been in violation for many years.
So being within the 50-foot buffer zone is a concon violation?
He should have filed an ODA to use that, that area.
Okay. Can you still do that?
Yes.
Do you understand that?
Does that have anything to do with the soil conservation?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
But this is, you understand, you have to do it.
He'll go to the Conservation Commission for that.
It was already bought, but it was a much smaller composite soil, and it was mostly in the middle of the, uh, the room. Supplies are used, so, but, um, people outside of that area, but he's in the water.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there any, anybody that would like to speak relative to?
The board gets permission for?
Can I speak on this?
Yes.
So is there an active permit right now? Because we gave him a permit for soil removing and mining. That looks like it might have expired on December 31st. But what that says is that there were restrictions. No hauling of gravel on Saturdays and Sundays or holidays. So it doesn't indicate that he couldn't do other work during that time. Hours of operation, 7:30 to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday. License, he wants to maintain a log of Dyton soil, but we haven't been monitoring, uh, monitoring that, so. Since this permit, have you applied for another permit? This expired on December 31st, 2018.
So it was December 31st, 2018, correct? So if you go back to the minutes, I believe it was, it was sometime between June of 17 and, I don't know, I can't find exactly what it is, but I think the question was asked as far as the permit goes and it was the duration of the permit. And I think it was Agia who said that the permit goes for one year of the date that the permit was issued. So I don't understand how if it was issued in July and then all of a sudden December 31st, there's no void. I mean.
Can I correct you? It was issued in September of 2018 and it expired.
It expired two months later.
It was September 4th.
This doesn't make any sense.
If we, you and I signed a permit on July 11th, 2018.
I just read the minutes and it's.
Yeah, it said it expired on December 31st, 2018. I don't know why you didn't get it for a year out of.
Right, so even if, if that is the case, even still, yes, it is technically expired. Technically, I'm not mining soil, I'm screening soil. I'm not removing any dirt from the property. It's a mountain. Anybody that drives by can see it. You and I stood on it.
Yep.
And talked about it.
Right. Do we all agree that screening loom is not mining?
Correct. Absolutely. That's an objective fact. It doesn't matter if we agree or not.
Okay.
The, the truckloads of dirt, excuse me, soil that left the property on February the 4th, where did that soil originate?
You actually followed it, because it's a police log. So you tell me where it went.
No, you said you have Dyton soil and you have non-Dyton soil. So my question is, the soil that was being hauled out of there on the 4th of February.
Okay.
What was the source of that soil?
Outside of Dyton. There's no bylaw that says that.
But it wouldn't matter even if it was from Dyton, because you paid the tipping fee, correct?
It would, it would, if I may, Mrs. Chairwoman. It would, because it should have been logged on the soil log.
That's not true.
No, it is true. If you have Dyton soil that leaves Dyton, then it should have been on the soil log.
It's not from Dyton.
Right. I'm just answering your question. He's stating that it wasn't Dyton soil. If it were Dyton soil, the relevance would it be? It should be on the soil.
And I actually also believe that if it were Dyton soil, which I think we've kind of come at an impasse about, if I mined more than 40 yards of soil from my property, even if I have two pieces of property, one right next to the other, and I take 40 yards and move it from this lot to that lot, I, because I own the property, would have to apply for the permit. But if Mr. Smith brought me 40 yards from his property to my property, I am not responsible to pay a tipping fee. He's responsible because it came from his soil, his site, and it's his soil. I can't pull a permit from Mr. Smith's property. There was 1,750 yards that came from the Dyton Police Department. I paid that fee, even though in the bylaw, doesn't say that I have to pay that fee. Technically, whoever owns the property has to pay that fee. I paid it in good faith. Now in 2020, we're back here because of alleged violations that clearly don't make any sense.
Now, I want to know, you had mentioned something earlier that I want to go back to. You mentioned that someone had followed you. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, the truck driver said that.
Because there was no violation, so I'm confused how that happened. And then, if there was thought to be a violation, why after someone had followed you, why the log viewer wasn't called upon to view the logs?
So yeah, so I do agree that, you know, if Mr. Agia didn't get a chance to view the logs, I mean, there's been, this has been since 2018. I can't say that I haven't been down there, that we couldn't have viewed the logs at all. But I do also agree that there's been very limited work done there. The reason why there's been very limited work done there is because of the harassment that I've gone through. And I've clearly moved my business operation to another city, out of town. So.
Did you know you were being followed? That your trucks were being followed?
Well, there was a dark Buick vehicle that kept on going, I have pictures of, that's followed them, as well as the driver mentioning, as well as a police log that's now mentioned on this Goulart, who's followed the vehicles. For what intent, I have no idea. But she followed the vehicles stating that there was soil being removed. Yeah, so I don't know as far as why that was done, but it was done.
Can I see the pictures, please?
Can, I have a question about that, though. Can someone tell me where in the regulations it says that following someone is within the normal scope of the duties of a Soil Conservation Commission member? That seems very out of the scope of what our task is here. Would we all agree on that as a commission?
No, no, we wouldn't.
You think that's acceptable?
I'm not gonna get into that when you hear.
It's public record. You have to get into it here.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I will address this. I want to get through, I want to get through this initial first.
Yeah, there's no violation. I think it's pretty much settled. Would we agree on that?
No, it's not. No. Simply because we have people in the audience, and I'm gonna ask if any of the abuddists wish to speak on the article that says alleged violations of soil mining slash removal regulations. Does anyone wish to speak?
I do.
Mr. Reins.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'll just say this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna direct the vote, okay? And we dealt with ICI as an enterprise for many years across the street byhouse. And on Sundays, they were not allowed to do any construction when it was flooded, but in the mining bylaws, it does state that there was no work to commence on Saturdays and Sundays. You can put the, whatever spin you want on it, whether that thing's above ground, that tunnel was above ground or below ground, it's still a mining operation, flat out. I worked in a mine. Don't tell me, Mr. DeRosa, shake your head. I worked for Agri Industries for five years.
Read the bylaw.
Five years down in Nekor.
Read the bylaw.
Excuse me, excuse me.
And my other question, my other question is that.
You have the floor, Mr. Reins.
My other question is that there's been an area that's around 138 that's been already mined and has gravelled there. Any good miner will reclaim the property as the way they found it when they got there, because that's just the way it works. That's just the way it works. I'm not upset, you know, I have nothing personal against the gentleman. It's just that I have a 91-year-old mother who kept saying to me on the Sunday morning, "What is that racking up my back window?"
If there was, if there was an issue with that, there was, there was two other abuddists who aren't here tonight that did come by, that didn't just call the police and try to make this a criminal matter, because it's not a criminal matter. I've gone down to Mr. Reins' property and I plowed him out as good faith, as a good, as a business in this town, as a, as a good person, upstanding person in this town. And he can deny that if he wants.
I'm not gonna knock, I was just.
So, so, so we obviously know each other on a personal level, so if it bothered him for me to do whatever mining operation he claims, he could have easily came down rather than go to a police station and try to taint my name, much like you've done. Ms. Goulart?
I haven't tainted your name.
You tried to.
Now, I will, does anyone else wish to speak who's an abudda? Ma'am, could I have your name and address, please?
I'm 1950, some of that.
Can you name, please?
Maria, that's over. And like he said, there's always a lot of noise, Saturday or Sunday, any day of the week. And they have two porta-potties right next to my yard. And I would like them to move those porta-potties out of there.
That's, I believe that's a different, that's a different property.
Then why was I called?
You're still an abudda to this property.
Really? Oh, so they're not the ones with the, the, uh?
No, you can call me next week about the porta-potties.
Can I? Okay. Can you give me your phone number?
I know, I know.
Sorry.
It's okay.
But if it is loud, just come down. I'm glad you shut it off. Just like I told you, I believe he's your nephew, actually, from the police department.
Grandnephew.
Whatever, he's your relative. I think I told him.
Yes, I publicly stated that when he was appointed.
He pulled down there and he'd ask me.
Yeah, I just, I just finished with something. This whole situation on mine things, when I had the officer come to my home, could have been exacerbated by him just stating to me that I do not have any legal permit in my hand, and I would just drop it right there and then. And come to the appropriate source at the time and said, "Hey, you know, what's going on here?" That's, that's the only good point that I had in this whole situation. I was never told that day, when an officer arrived, that we do not have a legal permit in our hands to do what we need to do. And that's, that's all.
That's because, Mr. Reins, to that point, because the Soil Conservation Commission wasn't involved, the police were involved. We were never consulted.
But my point is, it's not a question of being consulted. This is a question of.
It is, because we could have told you about the permit.
And an individual had to come in to have, apply for his permit, has his permit reproved back on again, and then there was no commitment action. So my point again about that is that all that had to be solved that day was that we have no viable paperwork in order to shut it down, and that's it.
Mr. Reins, I just wanted to add, though, we have to add, he wasn't mining, so he didn't need a permit to do what he was doing.
Your point, your law's good on this, honestly, about mining.
That's, that's the regulation. I'm just reiterating the regulation.
Could I comment about, could I comment about the, the noise? Because I went over there on February 2nd, I believe, it was the Sunday, when I heard of a complaint about the noise. And I didn't find the noise, I, I can't speak for your mother, Tim, but I didn't find the noise to be that loud.
How, how close, how close did the machine weigh?
I was very close. I was on top of the hill, if you, if you remember, and there was somebody operating.
Could you just give a footage roughly?
15, 20 feet, maybe a little further than that, but I, I can honestly say, I didn't, you know, nobody likes to hear any kind of noise in, in the neighborhood, I get it, but it wasn't, if we had a decibel machine or whatever, it would not have been very high. So I can understand why your mother might be, you know, she's 91 years old, might be something that bothers her, but I didn't find it to be that, that loud. And the other thing was that I had, I couldn't go over there to stop him. I went over there to see what was going on. I had no cease and desist in my hand, I had no order saying that he didn't have the right to do that. And we had a conversation about it, and I indicated to him that he probably most likely to be coming before the, uh, the cell block.
I actually have a question about the point that you just made, Chair, uh, excuse me, Selectman Pacheco. Actually, I was contacted and asked to issue, I don't know if you know this, because obviously we don't break the open meeting law beforehand, but I was actually contacted and asked to issue a cease and desist as the prior Chairperson of the Soil Conservation Commission. And so what I'm finding curious here this evening is the fact that because no evidence was produced of a violation, that when I said no, as the Chairperson of the Soil Conservation Commission, I find it quite curious, and there are no coincidences in politics, right, that the police were then involved. So to me, what it seems like was happening is that certain individuals were attempting to circumvent the authority of the Soil Conservation Commission and to involve the police who are not as familiar in the matter regarding the permit and the mining operation. That's what it seems like to me.
It's not criminal, so you wouldn't go over there saying that.
So now I will address my involvement in this. I received a phone call on a Sunday that there was loud noises on the property. You were working on the property on Sunday. I said I would look into it. When I contacted the police, evidently the police had already been called and were looking into it. I had no documentation at home. I didn't do anything else on the Sunday. On the Monday, the next day, after doing a site visit, I was taken to the location in Berkeley where you have your business, 27 Locust Street. There was no evidence of soil or anything there. The next day, on the 4th, I was going south on, oh, let me back up. So on the Monday, I checked to see what we had on file here. What we had on file was a copy of the permit that it had expired in December of 2018. And even if it was stretched out to a year, it still had expired if it had gone into the next year. I found two cease and desist orders that had no end date on them. So one was 2006, one was 2040, which would indicate those cease and desists were still in effect, because they didn't say for one year or anything else.
Where were they from, Selectman Goulart? Who issued those? Was this, this?
The soil boy.
No, that's not true. When is that?
Do we have the cease and desist orders here?
One was from the Board of Health and one was from the Conservation Commission, both unrelated to, is that correct, Mr. DeRosa?
Do we have the cease and desist orders here?
What's the dates again on those?
There was a cease and desist on the soil, but that was.
But you, we, that was the whole rigor morale we did in 2018. Thank you.
So, Ms. Goulart, I'd like to know.
Okay, I haven't finished yet. Okay, so one was issued by the Building Commissioner, and it's a zoning bylaw violation.
Unrelated.
And one is a Board of Health.
Unrelated.
Stormwater violation.
Completely unrelated.
And the stormwater is on 2006, and the other one is on?
Is there one from the Soil Commission?
Is there one from this decade?
2040. I, I don't think we need your sarcasm. So to get back to what happened. No, you're, you're pointing out a lot of opinion.
Correct.
So going back to, no, it's opinion.
You disagree with them, so you call it an opinion.
So going back to the permit, the hours of operation were 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So this was happening on a Sunday, so that's a violation of the permit. All right? That's, that's the rules here.
It was an expired permit, so he's not violating the permit that he doesn't have.
But it's not a free-for-all. You have to have a permit.
Show me in the regulations.
So you, if you don't have a permit because it expired, then you're in violation anyhow, because you've got to have a permit.
He wasn't mining.
So, so this, this, uh, this permit was for soil removal and mining, period. No hauling of gravel on Saturdays and Sundays or holidays. When I was there, I was there on a Sunday, there was no hauling of gravel or anything like that, no mining. Hours of operation, 7:30 to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. That's for soil removing and mining, right? As I interpreted that, right?
You are correct.
Doesn't mean he can't do other stuff and, uh, can't sell moach on a Saturday.
So you, Ms. Goulart, you're saying that I was hauling material out there on Saturday and Sunday, correct?
No, no.
So what was I doing?
So getting back to what I was telling you, okay? So when I came in on Monday, after the site visit and the trip to Berkeley, I went through the records to see what we had, okay? I will offer you some respect and expect it in return, Selectman Segroff.
You've shown him no respect.
So then the next thing that happened was on the 4th, Tuesday.
So I'm not sure what happened. What happened on Monday that I did wrong with it? You had to follow the vehicles. I'm not sure.
I didn't follow the vehicles.
You said that you followed the vehicle. On Monday, you followed the vehicle.
No, no, that's not what I said. That's why we're on tape. What I said was.
She didn't say that. She said that she looked at the records.
We had been to a.
Right, is that what you said?
Let me back up. I said after a site visit that was made, the site visit wasn't your property. I was taken to Berkeley because they had rumors that you were hauling gravel or dirt, soil to Berkeley.
So what did Berkeley have to do with it?
And I was shown where that was. There was, that's when I said there was no evidence of anything being there.
With Dyton, it has nothing to do with Berkeley.
So then, I came back to the town office, and I looked in the files to see what we had, and we had those cease and desist, uh, cease, cease and desist orders. So as far as I knew, the police were looking into it. I did not call the police specifically that day. They had already been called when I got the call on Sat, Sunday. So anyhow, on Tuesday, I was going south on 138, past your property. I was headed for the highway garage. As I was headed towards the highway garage, there was a vehicle, a red Mack truck, kind of an older tractor, with a black trailer coming out of that lane, a road there that is between your property and your north, your northerly abudda there. And so I made a U-turn at the highway department, because when I got there, it was past the time when the garage would have been open. It was well after 3 o'clock, probably after 3:15. So I made the turnaround, and when I came back, the truck had come up to the road, highway, and had to stop because of traffic. I just pulled off the road into the parking lot where the pizza joint was, and I called dispatch and said, "This truck is hauling soil." All right? Because I was under the impression that the soil was Dyton soil. Like, there's no way for us to tell if it's Dyton soil or somebody else's soil.
That's what the logs are for. That's what the logs are for.
So then I continued northbound on the, on the road, okay? And followed the truck. It went over the bridge into Berkeley, and it went to 27 Locust Street. It dumped its load.
Right.
That's what I observed, and that's what I reported to the police.
Did you see loom? Did you see gravel?
It was black.
But did you see, did you see rocks?
Really, really black dirt. No, it was good dirt, good soil.
So I have a question. So you said you drove down there after you heard allegations of me moving material. You pulled in there and there was no material, correct?
I didn't pull in.
You said, you said you first visited the site because you heard there was allegations of me hauling material over to my site.
Correct, in Berkeley. Correct, correct.
Then after that, you, you drove there, you saw that there was nothing there, you left.
No, I didn't drive there. I was taken there.
Whatever the case might be. You visited 27 Locust Street, you visibly saw that there was nothing there.
Correct.
But you heard allegations of things being dropped off there.
Prior to the first trip.
Prior to, right. So you went there, there was nothing. And then all of a sudden, there was a black Mack truck that went by. Do you feel like there's some sort of like harassment here?
No.
I, I mean, how did, how is it not? You went to my site, there was nothing there. You, you got tipped that there was something happening that wasn't happening. You got, then you, then you came back and you researched all these cease and desists that have nothing to do with your board. And then you called the Dyton Police Department, you had your nephew come down and visit me.
No, that's not true.
Which is logged, okay?
That's not true.
Whatever it is.
It's in the log.
It's in a log. It's in a police log that you called. If you need it, it's public record, you could go down there and look at it.
You're confusing the dates.
Whatever the case might be.
No, it's not. No, sir.
No, no, no. So, so you looked, and there was no cease and desist on anything that I did, but yet I was, Mr. Pacheco was told to come down and give me a cease and desist, was he not?
I was also told.
And he was also told to give me a cease and desist. For what?
Asked. Who ordered the cease and desist the next time?
That's curious. I don't know. Could you shed some light on that?
As far as I knew, I didn't have the cease and desist. What day of the week did you get the call?
That doesn't matter. Who asked, who asked the executive assistant to ask me to issue a cease and desist? It was someone on the commission.
I believe that was me.
Okay. Without evidence, you, now who asked you to do it?
I don't recall anyone asking me to do it.
So it was your idea?
Yeah. Evidently, it seems that way.
So you thought that it was a good idea to issue a cease and desist to a business owner and shut his life hood down on a whim? on a whim, without any facts, you still didn't view the logs. Tell him when you.
No, no.
It's true.
No, it's not.
It is true.
Mr. Z, Dr. Segraffas, please.
It's true, everything I just said is true.
No, I don't think so.
It is, prove me wrong.
I'll tell you one more time, Mr. DeRosa. I got a call on a Sunday about noise.
Is there, is there any allegation, I just want to know, is there anything that I, that I violated as of right now? That you have a fact.
Police were called.
Is there any fact that you have that I violated, yes or no?
Yeah, you're operating without permit.
Are we here for a permit? What am I, what do you need, do you need me to give you $400 for, for an extended permit? Because clearly, you guys, as a board, as a Soil Board, don't have the means to put together enough day-to-day operations to A, check my logs, or B, notify me. And I'll tell you why, because I'm the only person in this town that has a soil permit. I'm the only person in this town outside of somebody in 1980 who has ever had to file for a permit. And I did that, but yet, you're still trying to harass me and shut down my operation. And I'm telling you right now, on camera, that if this continues, and it's, it's going to litigation. Not, not to the town, but the town officials who take it upon themselves to come and harass me in my business. And that is happening, that is a fact, 100%. Because I, I moved out of this town and I will show you, hands down, with tax returns and everything else, that it's physically affected my business, moving out of town with $8,000, I mean, 8,000 car traffic count. And that's what it's done. So, so if, if you guys have no leg to stand on, just tell me, if you want $400 for a new permit, no problem. No, no problem. You guys got to get your act together and tell me what it is that you want, when it is that you want it, what logs you want. I'm not logging dirt that comes in that's outside of Dyton, has nothing to do with you guys.
You don't need a permit then.
If I'm, if I'm digging a hole in my property, I need a permit. If I'm screening material, I don't need a permit. There's been, I, I can prove to you that on my site alone, there's been many people who have gone and screened loom. If you go to my next door neighbor, right up the street at the auction, he has a screener sitting there with a big pile, he's screening loom. Does he have a permit? No.
Because you don't need one. You're telling it on Facebook, you are screening loom, it's true.
Our regulations say on 7D, screening permitted in business areas with no dust problems affecting neighbors.
Correct.
Screening permitted in business areas with no dust problems affecting.
Has nothing to do with the soil permit or anything.
That's.
Yeah, so we just wasted 35 minutes on nothing, I apologize.
Well, we have a right to have.
Absolutely, well, he needs to do the hearing for the renewal.
So I have a few questions, if I might. This is geared right towards Ms. Goulart. So you've already stated that on February 4th, you were following trucks to and from 2040 County Street, correct?
Incorrect. Followed one truck.
Okay, so you were following a truck from 2040 County Street to my other location, correct?
The driveway there.
You followed that from 2040, or from Dyton, from my location, my operation, my general area. So under what capacity were you acting, as a, as a select woman or as a resident?
I wanted to know if this information I was given.
What capacity were you acting on, as a select woman or as a resident?
That's a good question.
A member of the Soil Board.
That's not covered, that's not a covered duty, Selectman Goulart.
So, so, so.
You know, you know, following a truck is not a covered duty.
On the police force, whom did you call and talk with on the police force?
Whoever was on dispatch that day.
Who was it?
I don't know, it was a female.
The police logs right here says Teresa Costa.
No, 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 it wasn't Teresa.
Oh, there were multiple calls.
No, it wasn't Teresa.
So what, what, what patrolman made the report?
On what day?
I believe it was February 4th.
I haven't seen a report from patrolman on the 4th, I saw one written by.
On the 3rd, right here, can I read that, since it's part of the public records? You're not the chairperson, Mr. DeRosa. Okay, this is from Patrolman Jason McGovern, dated Monday, February 3rd, 2020, to all Dyton Police Department users at dytonmass.gov, that's everybody at the police department, subject. DeRosa landscaping 2040 County Street. I'll make this short and sweet. Sunday, Timothy Reins came to complain about DeRosa's landscaping, quote unquote, "mining" on the property located at 2040 County Street. Reins said the town had a bylaw preventing such activity on Sundays. I looked through the bylaw book we have at the station and saw nothing of the sort. I told Reins until I was able to seek clarification, DeRosa could continue. Reins was furious and he came close to spending the afternoon out back. However, I was able to de-escalate. Today, I received word from the town that DeRosa did at one time have a permit to remove soil and mine the property located at 2040. Now, before I finish this, can anyone shed some light for the Soil Conservation Commission? Who gave word, who was the town here? Who gave word to Patrolman McGovern that DeRosa did at one time have a permit to remove soil and mine the property? I think that's kind of important, who was that? Who was, who was the town official that went to someone on the police department and was giving them information regarding this private business owner?
That's an interesting question and maybe we need to have Patrolman McGovern come in.
Yeah, I definitely think so. I definitely, I think something's going on here.
Nobody has any idea who that was?
I gave the, I went to the police station on the 3rd and the 4th. Fourth after I stopped at, no, she called me at home on the 4th. The 3rd, I gave them copies of what was in the file from the Soil Board.
Who's them?
Jason McGovern, he was coming out of the building.
So you gave your relative, you gave your relative documents and tried to shut this gentleman's business down?
No, I didn't.
Let me finish the email. Says the permit expired 20, December 31st, 2018. Here's the good part, wait for it. So any complaints about soil removing or mining done on that property should be shut down immediately. So let's think, we have someone on the Soil Conservation Commission who also doubles as a select person, giving information to their relative on the police department to shut down your business. Is that appropriate behavior?
My next question is.
Is that appropriate? I want to, Mr. DeRosa, I just want to know.
One at a time.
Is that appropriate behavior? I want an answer, from anyone who thinks this is appropriate, raise your hand.
So I, I, I'm not, I have a question, I'm not done.
When the.
She's answering his question.
When the complaint came in and I had called the police, they said they didn't have documentation and stuff. What I gave them was what was in the file, okay? As it turned out, there wasn't sufficient documentation, this is, this is the beginning. There wasn't sufficient documentation to shut it down, that's why it didn't get shut down.
That's, what you're saying is that ends justify the means, because he didn't, he didn't get shut down, everything's okay. No, it looks like from the correspondence that you attempted to get him shut down.
You don't have all of the records here.
That does, what is incorrect about what we're looking at? What, what record do you have?
You don't have all the information here.
Did you or did you not, and I apologize, Mr. DeRosa, did you or did you not try to have the Dyton Police Department shut down Mr. DeRosa? That's what the email says, should be shut down immediately.
My attempt to give the police information was public information that was in the file because they didn't have anything relative to any actions soil would have taken.
That's why it should have come to the Soil Conservation Commission.
When they got the information, the cease and desist, the.
It's not, but it is when you have relatives on the department that you can tug, you can tug, you can pull.
You're not a lawyer.
I'm not, it's what happened, prove me wrong. It's what the documentation.
I am trying to explain, but let's face it.
Ms. Goulart, let's face it, there's no evidence, you know, I have not.
I am trying, I am being accused of things that aren't correct.
They're correct, it's in public records, Selectman Goulart.
I am trying to explain to you that you don't have all of the information. Order of events, we know that Mr. Reins called the police, Mr. Reins called me. We know that Patrolman McGovern spoke to Mr. Reins.
This is, this is really.
What we know is that police didn't have any information. I gave them public records. I also know that they looked into it and when they looked into it, there isn't sufficient information for them to take any action.
Curious that your relative was the officer that paid Mr. DeRosa business, isn't that what you said?
I won't set the schedule.
We're going off on a tangent there.
It's not, it's very belated.
The, the problem that we have here is that we have a businessman that we're, instead of telling him.
Harassing. Harassing.
That's, if I could just complete my, my sentence.
I apologize.
No, we have a businessman in town that instead of just going over to him and says, your permit has expired, he may be well aware of that.
By the way, we need to have a public hearing, we have to tell him.
Yes, your permit has expired, come before the Soil Commission and get a, a new permit. We should not be spending our time trying to shut down a business in town. We are looking for businesses. I believe you moved mostly your operation to Berkeley because of some.
My last question has to do with all of what we're talking about, and again, this is to Ms. Goulart. Do you think that it's ethically correct to use a family member, as well as your title of select woman and/or chairman or board member of the Soil Commission, to harass people, follow vehicles, and also try to shut down businesses in town?
Number one.
Yes or no?
I didn't, that's not a yes or no question.
I said, do you think it's ethically correct, it's a yes or no?
Officer McGovern, I was in the parking lot, walking to the building, he came out of the building and said, hi, how you doing? I gave him the documentation and he took it into the building, all right? That was that. I did not single him up.
Would you go to a patrolman or would you usually go to like a sergeant? I would go to a sergeant.
I don't know what working schedule he has. During the week when I stocked in, whether it was Monday or Tuesday, I did speak to Sergeant Nichols, okay? Gave him some documentation, all right? That was the extent of it.
What does, what do the police have to do with any of this? I just, I don't know. What is, what does the police have to do with, with a town, with a town permit? What does the police have to do with?
The resident calls me and says there was a problem and he has called the police, I called to find out what happened.
But you, but you gave them a cease and desist order from a town, it has nothing to do with a complaint?
What do you have to do with the police? What do you have to do with being at the police department? When, when there's a, when there's a, when there's a complaint at the police department, you do not belong down in the police matter whatsoever.
Put this in your file.
But what does a cease and desist order have to do, why do you give it to a patrolman? A patrolman, is it in their duties to take a town cease and desist order and do something? You said that you did.
No, no, I went back.
You said you handed it to Patrolman McGovern when he was coming out of the office.
Not the cease and desist. I gave documentation to Sergeant Nichols on a subsequent day.
Well, we can go back on the tape because that's not what you said. That's why we have these meetings now broadcasted because it's a circus.
That's why I asked for the pictures too.
We're spinning wheels here.
The picture, your pictures will come out when the litigation comes.
I agree with Dr., I agree with Dr. Z that we have to be careful who we talk to in town when they're a relative. There's somebody that the town is going to hire this on, on this list here tonight that I checked just because the name is a family name that I have to make sure that I wasn't related to this person, I have relatives in town, my wife has, so I have to be, I have, we have to be so careful. So the last person, the last person, if I had to, if I was going to go to the police station, the last person I would do is go to a relative of mine and approach them on anything, so I don't find.
You think you'd go to the chief?
I don't find any violation here, so if we can put this to bed, I don't, I don't see a violation.
I will say it again, I did not seek him out.
You said you sought him out, but.
I didn't know he was working on the weekend, as a matter of fact, it was during the day, I thought he worked nights. He was coming out of the building.
I'm not saying you sought him out, it's just that once he became the person.
This gentleman in the back, Mr. Roderick?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I attended a meeting here a number of years ago and Mr. DeRosa was ordered to do a stormwater plan on that property?
Has nothing to do with this.
This isn't the stormwater committee.
I'm just asking.
We wouldn't know because I'm not on that committee, Mr. Roderick, I'm not. That's complete, that'd be like coming here and asking me about the zoning board.
Looking into this, I mean, is this the file?
Yeah, you can call, I don't know, you can call Mrs. Gracie at the, at the, she's the office manager at the Board of Health, yeah. We wouldn't know, I'm, Selectman.
You just don't know?
No.
The, the, all of yous don't know?
Excuse me?
The plan has never been filed, has it been filed?
She's on the stormwater committee, Selectman.
I don't know if it's been filed, it's not something I would review, it would have been reviewed probably by Mr. Pillin, the health agent.
The health agent?
The other question I have.
Yeah, I should ask him then.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
And if he tells me no.
Recourse would go through that.
Then it's going to go before the stormwater committee.
My question is regarding the permit itself. Who else in town has this type of permit?
Absolutely no one.
And when is the last time, somebody mentioned 30 years, but is that true?
Yeah, that was literally the last one, I believe.
I mean, that's, we either got to treat everyone the same or.
So I don't even know why you guys even have this.
That's not what you're saying.
That's not true.
We should treat everyone fairly and equitably, that's what we mean. And that's what we're trying to do here, Mr. DeRosa.
I have a couple of things to say, Mr. Chairwoman. First off, I've been here almost 10 years now. This particular property was the only one that triggered the Soil Conservation Board's involvement. There was talk about another one in town for a mining operation that never came to fruition. So it wasn't like we aren't involved in activities, none of them have triggered the requirement for the permit.
Nobody in town, nobody in town has taken soil and.
Yeah, what about the 100 acre, new football field that's going in at the new high school over here, where's all that soil?
They, they, they have, they have, it's not leaving the site.
It's not?
It's not, no.
No, no, that's what I was going to say. The Dy, all right, so how about this, the Dy, the Dyton Police Station, we, we already have it agreed that tower, tower engineering and tower construction moved over 1,800 yards with them, that's in the, that's in a log. But, but they didn't trigger 40, 40 cubic yards? Did you, did you guys as a town?
It was discussed by this board.
Right, so, so, so you guys triggered that, but did the town ever have to go for, for a permit?
It wasn't the one who initiated the permit, but it was discussed by this board.
But, but you knew about it, so I'm not the only person in town, I'm just the only person in town that has a permit.
The soil has not.
And has, and has to pay tipping fees.
The soil has not left the site on the Bristol Aggie project.
But the soil has left the site.
For the police stations, did anybody, I know it was the police station, so this may seem we've done that, but did anybody call the police when that soil was being removed?
You know that, of course.
What happened with the police, was when it was realized that soil was being removed from the site, the construction site, they were told to stop because the soil should have been offered to the Dyton Highway Department first. And as it turned out, did the highway department benefit from some soil from the police station? Okay.
Some soil, yes.
Yeah, I've got a bunch of, I have a bunch of women, the town of Dyton wants to die off.
Well, this is not.
The other point, the other point, the other point I want to make, seeing as how Mr. DeRosa has so eloquently called out many town officials, you have had problems with every, almost every agency that's had some oversight over your property. You have not perceived yourself as someone who wants to follow the rules. There's been actions, actions on your part and you've always asked for forgiveness. The Conservation Commission you've had problems with, the Stormwater Committee you've had problems with.
I have a problem with anybody, I, the only problem that I have with me is one of us.
This is irrelevant.
Who's here?
This is irrelevant.
It's relevant because, it's relevant because.
Excuse me, Mr. Aggie, I have the floor. You can respond, let him finish.
Mr. Aggie, ask me, please.
It's relevant because you painted a picture how we are anti-business and we are not anti-business. We are actually very business friendly.
You're anti-him, that's all he was saying.
Hold on.
That's all he was saying.
Mr. DeRosa has, has set the record where he does not want to follow the rules, he asks for forgiveness instead of permission.
So I, so, again, just one, one to answer that, okay? I, I got talked to about a sign that had to get moved three inches. Let me ask you about the guardrail that's well within the, the boundaries of the overlay permit on the Dyton Police Station or the huge barricades of, of concrete granite blocks, but yet I had to move it and that the Dyton Police Station has these rocks in front of them, right? But I had to move my sign, so technically, that's wrong. Secondly, hold on one second, let me, hold on one second.
You brought up a point, let me answer. They were given the ASGIL plans for that property to put the guardrail in the correct location, they were given the plans.
Right. Right.
So if that's.
Is it within the overlay?
No, it's, it should be outside of it. That's correct. They were given the ASGIL.
It should be. I'd like for you guys to have that engineered, like it was asked of me to do, or have it moved.
I'll look into it. Now you brought it up.
So, so there's one thing. The second thing is, again, when it comes to the permit, I, I filed for the permit. I paid my tipping fee and I did, I'm the only person in town that's done this in the past thirty-plus years. So I think that's a false statement. There are issues that I have over there. The issues that I have over there aren't just because I don't care. That's not what it is. You know, I, I'm looked at as, my neighbor absolutely hates me. It's fine. Hey, it's gone to criminal court, it's gone to land court, it's gone to all these different things. It is what it is. I mean, you don't always have a great neighbor. I mean, do I have millions of dollars to sit here and, and play town politics to, to get harassed? No, I don't. I don't. I have, I have soil that's on that property. I'm screening the soil. I'm not pushing into wetlands. I'm not building an empire over there. I'm not doing anything. I didn't push any of the boundaries. I'll fix those issues once I sell my loom and screen it. It has nothing to do with anything else.
But I want to ask a question about what you said, Mr. Commissioner. Is the reason you said that because that's the justification for having someone follow him across town lines?
No, no, absolutely. Absolutely not. No. You know me, you know, you know me better than that.
And watch his business. I mean, I'm asking that rhetorically. I know you don't know me better than that. I know.
I said that simply because Mr. DeRosa on camera tonight badged town officials as being anti-business and that's not an accurate statement at all.
Maybe even official.
Badged, I've badged one official.
I think telling him to move a sign is three inches off. It's, it's putting a little bit of harassment on.
It wa, it wasn't three inches. It wasn't three inches.
Okay, it wasn't three inches. It wasn't three inches. But, but I will, but I will say this. I did contact, I did contact the, the state, the, the state at Mass DOT and she said that if they were going to make me move a sign, they'd make every single person up and down Route one thirty-eight. That's into Somerset, that's into Taunton, that's everywhere. There is zero restriction on any other business.
That's not accurate.
It is accurate.
I don't want to get off. That's, 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 that's a discussion that's outside the purview of this board, so.
I know it is.
Are you going to need a permit to mine soil?
We want to, we want to point fingers, but we don't want to answer. I'm sorry?
Are you going to mine soil that you will need a permit for?
Have I done anything right now that triggered me to?
I'm asking, have future.
Maybe in the future when the.
Yeah, if I, if I mine soil, but I'm not mining soil, I'm not.
So you don't even want to renew it? That's all she was asking, Mr. DeRosa.
But I don't, I'm not mining soil. I don't have to renew it. I'm not ripping up soil at two, twenty forty County Street.
Then you, then, then you don't need to renew it.
The other agenda item says special permit renewal. That's why I asked the question.
Correct.
So you don't, we don't need to discuss that.
Am I, am I?
No.
Screening soil. Are, are we in agreement that it has nothing to do with mining?
Yeah, no, yeah. You don't need one. So the answer is you don't need to renew.
So technically, I never really even needed one other than the fact that whatever was triggered that one time, I got a cease and desist and I had to fill an application out, but you guys didn't even have an application to fill out. I had to wait three months and then get the application, right? So I didn't even need to do that because I never mined that soil. I, I paid the tipping fee. I did what I needed to do. I own that loom. I can screen it. I can sell it. I can do what I want, correct?
Correct.
So I guess no, I don't need, I don't need a soil application. Thank you.
Unless you're mining and you're not, so. We're hauling.
Is it, is there anything else? Anyone else?
Yeah, we'd like to be more specific about the hauling.
It says soil removal, but.
Yeah, we'd like to be a little more specific about this.
Right, this is, we're talking about Dyton.
Removing stuff, yeah, removing stuff from your property.
No, no, no. On the weekends, on the weekend operations. Can we be a little bit more specific so that we're not being harassed on the weekends as well?
Well, the, the permit that expired says, no hauling of gravel on Saturdays, Sundays, the holidays. That relates to the rules?
That relates to a permit.
Does that relate to those rules? Hours of operation?
I thought I saw that in here somewhere, but.
And then the log, which is already, number six, Mr. Ferry said.
So business operations during the weekends can be eight to five, nine to five.
No hauling gravel on a Saturday, Sundays or holidays. So wouldn't, he's not hauling. Are you, well, I don't know. Are you hauling?
We might be hauling, so.
I mean, if it's in the bylaw and it's something totally irrelevant to the permit.
No hauling gravel on Saturdays, Sundays or holidays.
Okay.
Hours of operation, seven thirty AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. And since it's all on the same line with hauling, I'm sure that's referring to hauling, not screening necessarily.
Sure.
And it says clearly here, screening permitted in business areas with no dust problems affecting neighbors. Obviously, it can't be too loud either. So he doesn't need a special permit? I don't, I don't see a violation?
There is a one.
When was the last time you saw soil logs?
Tonight.
Oh, okay.
Now, I guess it's irrelevant, right? Because I paid for the tipping fee for the soil derived from Dyton.
I mean, it's relevant because it was a, it was a, like a part of the, the previous special permit, so I wouldn't say it's not irrelevant. But you did pay the tipping fee. So if you were having activity, it should be logged.
Right.
Mr. Reins, did you have a?
Yeah, if I may, before I leave, I made the initial phone call, okay? And a lot of the wording that was in that email that came down, those are my words to shut him down, okay? And that's exactly what I said to the police. I was saying, I will sit here and say that up one side and down the other. And it's not defending Mrs. Goulart in any way she had before. So, Mr. DeRosa, if it caused a problem for you, I deeply apologize. Next time I will go directly to the source, okay? And that'll be, that'll be the end of that. So if I, if, by, by me making this phone call started this ruckus, I apologize.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're a big man.
Thank you, sir.
Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reins.
Is there anything else?
I think we're done here.
You have any other questions?
Pretty good. Thank you.
Want to take a motion to adjourn?
So not.
Oh, excuse me.
We've got minutes there. We want.
Oh, yes, yeah.
We're really cutting it close.
I want to make a motion to accept a minutes from July eleven, twenty eighteen. I wasn't here for May, so.
Okay. Second.
Motion was made in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions.
The ayes have it.
I'm going to make a motion, Selectman Goulart, to accept her review, the minutes of May twenty-third, twenty eighteen.
Second, I'll step down and second it. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions?
I motion to, I motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.